To the September 17th meeting of the zoning board of appeals. For all present, let's spend a few minutes reviewing how this meeting will be conducted. For the first two hours prior to 9:30 PM, we shall hold a public hearing on the applications that you received a notice on and that were listed in the Norwalk hour for hearing. After the application is announced by the chair and read by the secretary, the applicant will come forward, state his or her name for the record, and then present the appeal or relief being sought. Please present those zoning issues that are relevant to the practical difficulties or hardships requiring this application. After you or your representative have spoken, those in favor will have the chance to be heard. After that segment, those against the application will have the opportunity to state their opposition for the record. In the case of an appeal, the zoning staff will have the opportunity to present their findings. Finally, after those against the application have spoken, the applicant and only the applicant will have the opportunity to rebut and respond to the issues raised. The hearing is then closed and the next application called. New applications will not normally be heard after 9:30 PM as the board must discuss and act upon these applications. Please note that no further public input is accepted at that time. You're welcome to stay logged in for this portion of tonight's meeting, but should you decide to leave, you may contact the zoning office tomorrow to learn about our decision. Before we proceed tonight, I must remind you that this hearing is recorded and will become a matter of permanent public record. The first case to be heard this evening is application 20-0917-01 Claudia Gelszer and Wendy Foster. Mr. Secretary?
Chairman.
Variance is to allow a third story additional variance of dormer regulation requiring that it be set on two feet from the base of the building where premises previously granted by various. Property is located at 7 Near Water Road, District 6, Block 57A, Lot 38. Request, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow expansion of the existing third level of their home. Background, variances were granted in the 1990s for the destruction of the residence. The applicant has included copies for board review.
Yes.
Okay.
Analysis and findings, the board must review the application because it has previously approved a specific plan. The variance would not be necessary for the dormer or the third story if the applicant were to make the plan apply with the dormer definition by setting it in two feet from the face of the wall. And the additional footage could be obtained by extending the area into the attic space. Apparently the plan provided by the staff. There is no zoning hardship for the dormer variance requested. It is a design preference. Application does however need approval by the board because it is a modification to the approved plan. Thanks.
Ms. Suchi, I believe you are representing the applicant this evening?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at law firm of Carmody, Torrance, Sandec, and Hennessy, 707 Summer Street in Stamford. And I represent the owners of the property Claudia Gelszer and Wendy Foster, both of whom should be on this evening should you have any questions of them. In addition, Chris Pagliaro, the principal of Pagliaro Architects is also on this evening and will be making presentation to you shortly with respect to what my clients propose to do on this upper floor of this two and a half story structure. By way of housekeeping, the green cards evidencing mailing of tonight's public hearing to all budding property owners and those across the street were delivered to the Department of Planning and Zoning, I believe, today and should be in the file. Letters were sent to all budding property owners on or about September 2nd, and I believe all green cards have been returned from all of the letters sent. As indicated, the applicants are Claudia Gelszer and Wendy Foster. The property is at 7 Near Water Road in the Pine Point section of Rowayton. It is District Block and Lot 657A 38. The lot is about 3,900 square feet compared to the 6250 required for the B resident zone. That is the zoning classification for the property. It is also within the boundary of the coastal area management zone with various flood designations of AE 13, 15, and X. It is bounded by Near Water Road to the north, Ensign to the west, and other residential lots to the south and the east. As our moving papers indicated, and for those of you who are not aware, Pine Point, much like Bell Island, was developed as a summer beach colony. And then as the properties became desirable and people looked more forward to living by the water, many of the dwellings and nearly all the dwellings are now year-round dwellings. The lots are often small. Many variances have been granted for properties in this area in the past such as off-street parking, lot size setbacks, and the like. The existing conditions are a two-and-a-half-story frame dwelling. It's existed for more than 20 years and variances were granted for it in the early 1990s. It had been, for those of you who are familiar, Roger Bartel's home. And Roger was a well-known architect in Norwalk for many, many years. Since variances were granted in the past for this structure and additional changes are proposed by the applicants, we must return to the board so that you can review and act again on what the changes are. That is because variances are specific to plans that are submitted to you at the time of an application to your decision, and changes to those plans not revealed on the plans at the time of your decision need to be re-reviewed by you. You've seen this, these type of requests in the past. So the proposal is to construct a dormer on the uppermost floor to give my clients about 50 plus or minus more square feet of interior space, an area that's somewhat six by eight, six and a half by eight. And the dormer doesn't comply with the definition for the reasons that Ms. Rochford stated in her memo which we received this evening around 6:30. It's a small type of office area which is currently under, it's unfinished space under the roof. And the reason for this is, as you know, COVID-19 has dramatically changed the way in which all of us work and will continue to work and navigate through the pandemic. And many employers and employees are now more than ever working remotely and some employers are even adopting remote-first protocols such as vocabulary and other employers. So the work-from-home paradigm that all of us thought would be short-lived and short-term has shifted, resulting in homeowners trying not only to navigate this new normal that we're confronting, but also in surroundings that right now are not necessarily conducive to work environments that would be productive for all of us. This is especially true as I found in dual-income households where both members work remotely or even families with children where one or both parents work from home and youngsters are engaged in remote learning either completely or with some sort of hybrid system. Both of my clients work remotely and this additional workspace within the dwelling is important to them because it will provide them the needed increase in-home workspace that is both practical and functional for both of them. Let's see. The space that has been designed, we believe, is functional and purposefully designed. It allows for the inclusion of a desk that is a minimal size. Most desks are about three feet by five feet. And then you need some space for a chair behind you. The smaller concept that we provided for comparison purposes, while it's compliant, is less functional and it's really not preferable to my liking. So we're asking that you vary the regulations as they relate to that dormer requirement. There's no expansion of the footprint of the structure. There's no further encroachment to side yards. And it really is a technical requirement or request of you. And we believe that the strict application of the dormer definition in this instance presents both a practical difficulty and unnecessary hardship by which interior space that's desired would be less functional and less appropriate for my client's needs. All of the neighbors have been notified, as I indicated, and all of them support the proposal before you. And I believe that you have letters in your file from Ms. Kelly, Mr. Delesio, Ms. Bowles, Mr. Norris, Mr. and Mrs. Bastani, and Mr. Nash. So at this point, I would like, if you wouldn't mind, Chris Pagliaro, the project architect, to come on and to screen share his design drawing. And should you have questions, we're happy to answer them. And I think Chris will also address some of the comments that staff raised in the memo that we received as well as the drawing that staff provided to us. So without further ado, Chris, if you could come on and screen share, that would be great.
I'm muted, Chris.
There you go. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Just to familiarize yourself, firstly, I am Roger Boytall's partner. So I was an integral part of the design of this house originally, which makes me very familiar with the way it's built. This is just a location map. And with this Zoom thing, I can't change pages. So to familiarize you with what we're looking to do, we're looking to put the dormer on the rear side of a house that's on the gable that goes from Ensign toward Near Water. The idea is that there is an existing attic in this little space here. And by creating the dormer, we could create a space that makes it function as an office. It was never designed to be anything more than just a little area for a treadmill in the middle. And I have photos of the space that will help explain why the space is so small. I think you're familiar with where it's going based on some of the photography. This is the feeling of the space as it exists. You can see the headroom comes down very quickly within it. This area here is raised from a room below. So there are a couple of cabinets that are below it and then a shelf that creates the overhang on the side of the house. So it's not functional space below. You can see where this wall is as opposed to the wall that has the glass block in it. The staff report discussed expanding into another room here. And I have the report, so I guess you all have it too. But the suggestion was that the alternative to this would be to expand this area. But I'll explain why that can't happen. And it's because there is a hidden photo here. That area is a raised portion of the stories below. So this door is what goes into that area and this door sits on the floor of the attic space behind it. So that's why that sketch that was provided earlier this evening is not feasible to break through because we'd have to reconstruct the area below. The application before you in this drawing here is to really take space that exists down to the zero line in here but create headroom within, by creating a dormer here. Yes, there are some windows. The idea is to bring some light into it. But as you can see, the rest of the attic is undeveloped. So even though we're allowed 60% of finished attic space, we are proposing to do this and we're still only taking 24.9% of the area below. And that's because of all the mechanical equipment that is in this area. This is a lowered roof here. And this area is the area that's raised below, so we can't expand this way. So we're really landlocked in terms of attic that we could capture to create this space. I think, Liz, that that probably is, I don't want to take too much of their time. If they have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The difference between your two-foot regulation versus of setting this back versus going straight up really comes down to the fact that if this were pushed back, there'd just be roof coming across this. I don't know if you can see my cursor. I don't know how to annotate on a screen share. I apologize.
I can see it just fine.
Yeah, fairly easy to understand.
Yes.
So the dormer, the dormer is quite large from what you're showing us.
The dormer is, it's 10 feet out to out because we're staying within the three-foot modules of the window designs that are on the house. The idea is to build a workable desk area within, again, I control of my screen here, to build the desk area within this, in this module. Because if you really take a look at the plans, which I'm assuming you have yourself more so than just on my screen, you know, this wall here is three feet eight tall. These walls are five feet. And this is, this is the 6'8" line. So this is a pretty de minimis. It truly is an attic that was never designed for anything more than being attic.
Is it legally habitable space?
Yes, it's got a fix.
It's under the building code.
Yes, sir. It's habitable, it's habitable now. It's just minimally habitable. It's only habitable from five feet up. So, but it does have a fixed stair, yes.
Okay.
So this, we don't even have to change the stair to get into the space that's existing.
And this dormer is on the rear of the house?
I don't know what the rear is respectfully. Maybe Liz has some precedent. This is Ensign, this is Near Water. So it's the rear of Near Water, the side of Ensign, if you will.
Okay. I'm oriented now.
Chris, if you could show the photos where you provided information about the...
I'm certainly trying. I guess maybe this is the best description of it. So here's Near Water, here's Ensign, and that's the proposed dormer. In yellow.
It'd be on the side of the house in between and...
Yeah.
It's either the side or the rear depending on how you interpret it. It is, and we do want it, it is set back from the, I'm sorry. I don't know why this photo is taking so long to load. Maybe we just ex-nay that and try to do it another way. So we do have it set back two feet from the Ensign street elevation. So the start of the dormer is two feet back from this roof line. From this plane, it's two feet back.
All right, the plane being the outside wall surface?
The outside wall surface of Ensign.
Yeah.
Yes. Normally, there's a way to annotate. I don't know how to do that on this.
So the proposal is to run the exterior wall up and eliminate the even gutter at that point?
Correct. Which, believe it or not, exists in a position right over here because there was a tree there at one point. So, yeah, while we're doing it, we might want to go in and fill that in. But there was originally a tree that climbed up this and went through that. That was Roger, I guess, trying to channel his inner Frank Lloyd Wright.
There are very few people that will get that joke.
Okay.
For those not in the know, Frank Lloyd Wright built his studio in Oak Park, Illinois around a tree. And
Correct.
The tree existed in the office for many years. And even after it died, they left it in place as an architect.
And then he stepped the trellis around the trees that fall in water, right?
Would there be any reason to consider leaving the eve in place to, while the two wall surfaces are in the same plane, break it up by leaving the eve in place?
I would have no problem with that.
Because that would...
Take whatever eve is past this area and just continue the roof line.
Exactly.
Yeah, I find that, I find that to be acceptable.
Okay, that way it will give some visual separation to present this as a dormer.
Correct. That works for me.
I can, I can live with that.
Okay, so can I.
Do we have any other comments from the board on this?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, and I think so can the applicants, but thank you for your suggestion.
Yes, I'm confident, I'm confident the applicant counts. Yes.
Is there anybody on the board that wishes to comment or question the applicants?
I think it's straightforward. And the only thought that I had was that the roof line was looking a little absent, but your suggestion takes care of that.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions.
If there are no other questions, I'll ask, is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this?
So for any public participation, if anyone participating would like to say anything, use the raise your hand feature or you can dial *9 and that will raise your hand if you're on a telephone.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Well, I don't see anybody coming forward. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak against this application?
Can you hear us, Lee?
Yeah, now.
And now?
We, there were a number of letters in favor of this. Does the secretary wish to read them into the record or at least name the names of the people that had sent in letters?
I would if I could read them all. A number of them illegible. Aileen, do you have good copies?
I can look and see.
Yeah, there were several. Some of them came out as black smudges.
Yes, I have several prints of those.
I can certainly read them into the record if that's convenient and helpful to you and the staff.
Liz, if you could just read the names and addresses.
Absolutely.
And whether, I assume they are all in favor of this application.
They are. And if you give me one second, I will call all of those up and I will let you know where they're, who the signatories are and what their addresses are. So just give me a second. Okay. The first letter I have is signed by Kimberly Kelly and Drew Seeth of 3 Ensign Road. That letter was dated, I think it was yesterday. And in the middle of the letter, it says, "We have lived at 3 Ensign Road since 2008 and our property is directly adjacent to the area where the proposed dormer would be. In fact, our property, it is our property that most be affected. We find their request to be a minimal change to the house. One that would enhance the property value and we support it." That is from that, those property owners. Bear with me again.
Do you trust she's reading the truth?
Pardon?
Do you trust that she's reading the truth?
They've admitted.
I've known Ms. Suchi for a number of years. And I do trust her.
The next letter in support is by Mr. Delesio. And his address is, I believe it's Ensign Road as well. 12 Yarmouth Road by 28 Pine Point Road and Ensign Road. He owns a variety of properties in the general vicinity. His response was on September 9th. He has no objection. And then another support letter dated, I'm sorry it's taking so long, September 14th. And that support letter was signed by Sarah Bowles and David Norris of 8 Near Water Road. Three. There is a support letter also from Mr. and Mrs. Bastani. And their address is... Come on, it takes forever. Sorry. I believe they're directly across the street. I'm having trouble having that show up.
Right next door on Near Water.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Wendy. And then there was one additional letter from Mr. Nash as well. All of those are in the file. And if they weren't directly received by staff, we provided copies just in case. And that's, and that's it.
Okay. Any further questions from the board?
If you have any questions of us or my client or Chris Pagliaro, we're happy to answer them.
No, I think the board is fairly satisfied at this point since I hear no questions being raised unless you have any other issues you need to bring forward on it.
No, I think we've suggested to you what our rationale is, what the, we believe, practical difficulties and the necessary hardships are. And it's also set forth in our moving papers. So we hope that you can close the hearing and act on this matter this evening. Thank you for your time and we look forward to your action.
I will then close this item.
Did we miss something, Mr. Chairman?
Pardon?
I might have missed something, but did we ask for anybody who opposes this?
I already did.
I didn't hear it.
I did, and I heard none.
Yeah, I haven't heard one yet.
Before I close the public hearing, is there anyone that wishes to speak against this item?
And if you do, use the raise your hand feature or dial *9.
Hearing none, I will close this portion of the public hearing. The...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. The second item on the agenda is 20-0917-02 Mike and Kimberly Trauma, 1 Oliver Street.
Mr. Chairman, can I just interrupt for a second? Can you just make a announcement about the application for four button ball in case?
Oh, I will be glad to do that. I'm sorry. Item 20-0716-03 Scott and Donna Mattson.
You just touched the bottom before.
Button ball will be heard October 15th. They are coming in with, as I understand, revised plans that we have yet to see.
Correct.
They, if anyone is sitting patiently listening for that item, it will be held off until October 15th. Thank you. Andy, if you would read.
Yeah, 091702 Mike and Kimberly Trauma.
Yes.
Variance to elevate existing single-family residents previously granted by variance. If we build and reconfigure front and rear decks and balcony in B resident zone, property is located at 1 Oliver Street, District 5, Block 85C, Lot 118, Cam. Request, applicant is proposing to elevate the existing residences previously granted by variance and modify decks added balcony. Variances were granted in 1990 and 1993 for coverage and setbacks. Copies have been included for the board's review. Analysis and findings, the current proposal is to raise the house and reduce the lot coverage. The applicant proposes to raise the house to 16.5 feet. Base flood in this area is AE 13. The mechanicals, et cetera, must all be elevated to one foot above the FB to be in compliance with the zoning regulations. Generally, the board has looked favorably upon these applications to elevate houses to meet or exceed base flood. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Will the representatives for the Trombas come forward?
Good evening. My name is Norman Hill. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can, Mr. Hill.
Yes, good evening. Kimberly and Mike have asked me to represent them tonight. I just happened to be Kim's dad, but I am also a licensed... Yes, good evening. Kimberly and Mike have asked me to represent them tonight. I just happen to be Kim's dad, but I am also a licensed civil engineer and a licensed land surveyor. So this house is located in the Harborview neighborhood. It's 1 Oliver Street, and I would like you to, if you could, look at the plot plan that was submitted.
Hi, how are you?
Well, the plot plan shows the house at the intersection of Channel Street and Oliver Street. Can you still hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. So this house, we believe, was built back around 1911. The lot is only 40 feet wide.
No, thank you.
About 120 feet deep. So it's quite a small lot, but we believe this house, where it's situated, is a grandfathered house. In other words, it doesn't meet any of the setbacks except the rear setback, but we believe it's grandfathered in the position that it's located. So what the Trombas would like to do is they'd like to raise this house above the 500-year flood elevation. Currently, the house, the first floor deck of this house, most of it, is at elevation 12 feet above sea level. The ground averages around 6 feet above sea level. The house is already up at around 12 feet above sea level, but the 100-year flood is 13 feet above sea level, and the 500-year flood is 16.25 feet above sea level. Now, this house is in ill-repair, to put it mildly. It's been vacant for several years, and Kimberly and Mike would like to fix it up, but before they put a lot of money into this house, they want to raise it so it's not in threat of a flood from a hurricane. So step one would be to raise the house, and then step two would be to rehab the house. Now, they'd like to raise the house, as I mentioned, to elevation 16.4. They'd like to raise the front deck and the rear deck also. So that's the first primary reason why we're here, is to obtain permission to raise this house, keep the same footprint in the same location, but just raise it so it's no longer in danger of a flood. Now, there are a couple of things that they are asking for. If you focus on the front deck, they would like to put the stairs on the side of the house and have them be three feet wide. In order to do that, they would have to expand the deck towards Channel Avenue, seven tenths of a foot. So that's about eight and a half inches. They'd like to make that deck eight and a half inches closer to a channel. So that is one of the variances that they have requested. Another variance they've requested, if you look at the back of the house, you'll see a proposed balcony above the existing deck, and that balcony, as proposed, is only 29.5 feet from the center line of Channel Avenue, and it's required to be 35 feet. So they would need a, I believe, I think they would need a variance for that as well, even though the deck below it is closer to the channel. I think they would probably, it would be best if they had a variance for that proposed balcony. So just in summary, we'd like your permission to raise the house to elevation 16.4. We'd like to be able to expand the front deck so that it's seven tenths of a foot closer to Channel Avenue, and we'd like to approve, also approve a variance for the proposed second-story balcony so that it's only 29.5 feet from the center line of Channel Avenue. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'm just curious as to why you are elevating this, the additional height above and beyond the current FEMA regulations.
I know, I know. Well, 500-year floods do happen, and it's not a pretty thing. Can you imagine putting a quarter of a million dollars into this house and then getting hit with a giant hurricane that destroys it? So, like I said, the 500-year flood is 1625, so they're going to raise it to 1640.
So I will assume that you're a believer in global warming and
I am.
Well.
I am, I'm a civil engineer, I believe.
The neighborhood will be inundated.
Yes, sir, I do.
I really don't have any other questions. Anyone else on the board have any questions of the applicant?
If you needed a bare minimum space above the flood line, what would that be? You said you're going to put mechanicals under the wall?
No, they're going to be up on the first floor. So on the ground, on the ground, which would, you know, normally be considered your foundation, that's where the garage, that's where they park their cars, but the walls will all be breakaway. So you go up to elevation 16.4, and that's where the kitchen, living room, bedrooms would be. They're going to have an unfinished attic initially, so it's just a story and a half. If you don't count there where the cars are down below, it's a story and a half that's raised up above.
All right, let me be more clear. So if you have ducting of any kind, electrical conduit, wastewater, freshwater, wouldn't that all go under the floor on the first floor?
It would, yes. A lot of it would.
You need something above 13 feet to accommodate that. Typically, we've seen about a foot to a foot and a half needed. That would take it to above 14. So you're not way, 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 way above that, but it is a little peculiar.
Well, we are, like you say, 14 and a half with 16 and a quarter, about a foot and three quarters higher than that. That's correct.
Andy, I think it's somebody who's planning ahead.
I think so. As long as they're not asking for a boat dock on the seventh floor.
No, no.
Have we heard from all your neighbors about what you want to get done? Because I think you're on the end of a small road, and one of the other, if you want to call them main roads, at Harborview that kind of tucked in against other homes. Anybody raising objections?
If I had, the neighbor to our right on Oliver did email us with a few questions, which I answered to their satisfaction. They did submit it, from my understanding, for your, to be in the record, and they said they didn't plan on objecting. They were satisfied with the answers.
And all the other
Inbox.
Thank you.
We had, we had two letters, one from Nick Viti, who's an attorney that represents Shawna and Ron Kowalski. They, that's the application, or the information that they asked be kept into the record, and then Pamela Strater also sent some comments earlier today that I had forwarded right to the board.
Yes. I did get those.
I got one of them, for sure. It seemed more like a question that was answered by the applicant.
That's correct.
I'll ask the question. Have the green cards been submitted?
They have.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Absolutely.
Any other members of the board have questions of the applicant?
Nope.
Okay.
That the green cards have been received. Did you submit those to our office?
Oh.
No, was I supposed to do that?
I have them here. I have them here.
Yeah. Go ahead and submit those to our office, please.
Okay, my apologies.
Right away.
Normally, we would have not held this meeting if you hadn't submitted the cards. We would have removed you from the agenda.
My apologies, I didn't.
So please make sure you get them to Aileen tomorrow morning before 12 noon.
Will do.
Absolutely, 100%. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that wishes to speak in favor of this application?
I'll handle up. I'm not sure if she lowered it, so. I'll track up. I'll bring her over. So when I bring her over to talk, just make sure you say your name and address for the record, please.
I will now ask if there is any member of the public.
Come on, Lee, we got her over. Sorry.
Yeah.
This is Shawna Lagatall, at 3 Oliver Street next door, and I just wanted to say that Mike responded to a lot of our questions in detail, and we appreciate them being added to the record, and we're satisfied, you know, with the responses.
Good. Thank you for stating those facts. Appreciate it. Now I'll ask if there's any member of the public out there that wishes to speak against this application.
So I handed go up. I'm not sure if she tried to sneak in before you went to opposition, but I'll bring her over and we'll find out.
Okay.
Pamela, you're on. Just make sure you say your name and address for the record, please.
Pamela Strater, 16 Channel Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. You had my correspondence of earlier today, so I don't need to repeat that. The only thing I would say, as the neighbor, I guess I live behind that house, although when they change their front door, I'll live next to the house, so I'm not sure how you want to look at that, but regardless, I would agree with the P and Z and zoning boards that going to over the 500-year flood is a bit much. It will change, that's higher than any of the houses around here have been lifted that surround that house. It changes the light, the level of privacy, and I've lived here 20 years, and the house they purchased has never flooded in that time. There has not been water in that house.
Okay.
My only comment.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else that wishes to speak, I guess, in a sense, against this application? Hearing none, I will ask the applicant to come back and respond to issues that were raised.
Hi there. In terms of raising the house, we're well below the, I think it's 40 feet to the peak. We're at 30 feet, 4 inches and 3/8ths. We're only going up, it's not a colonial, we're only going up the one story, and where, if you look at the plans, it just has a higher pitched roof. It's not a colonial. So by going up, I don't feel that we're well under the code of 40 feet, or 10 feet below the code of 40 feet. I don't believe it's blocking, that wasn't our intention to block anybody's view or block the sun or anything like that. So I mean, that's all I can say, as far as the giving enough room underneath of the house to put HVAC, that would certainly help. So I mean, that's basically, that was our intention.
Okay, Aileen, are they in conformance to any other zoning issues?
They have had two previous variances to allow the existing house in the current configuration and location. So they are simply requesting that they elevate what was previously granted by variance, and then make those a couple modifications to the deck, and then add the balcony.
Okay. Very good. Not hearing any other questions from the board or from the public, I will close this item on the public hearing, and we will move on to item 20091703, Mary Keating, 39 Arnold Lane.
Thank you for your time. Everyone stay well. Stay well. Good evening.
I'm going to go ahead and read the information sheet. Variance of the zoning front setback to construct and attach two-car garage to replace a garage in carport. 40 feet required, 27.7 proposed. In a residence zone, as you know, the property is at 39 Arnold Lane, District 6, Lot 28B, Lot 142. So just to slim it down, the applicant wants a variance of a front setback to be able to construct a two-car garage addition. A two-car garage carport currently exists in the same location. Now also some findings, the triangular shape of the lot would, could be seen as a zoning hardship. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Will the spokesman, spokesperson for the applicant, please identify themselves and sign on?
Well, actually, it's me, Mary Keating, I'm speaking for myself.
Very good.
Hi, welcome. I mean, thank you for having me. So I had a slide presentation, and I think I can, can I share my screen with you?
Please go ahead.
So let me go to the So this is our variance. I can't see you now, though, but
I'm here.
Okay.
Sharing.
And I don't, so this is the survey, it didn't come out very well, but if you look at the survey, so we're on Arnold Lane on the corner, and
Are you sharing something?
But you can't see it?
I cannot.
Oh, oh. Let me get out of it, sorry. I don't know how we can screen.
A thing called share your screen, but
Yeah, let's try that.
Down on the bottom, typically, and it's green, and it's got an up arrow in it.
Yes, share screen, okay. So now can you see it?
I've seen that you're sharing it, yes.
Okay, so let me go to the beginning. Thank you for letting me know. So here's our presentation. I don't think it's, so this is our survey to just show you. So we live on the end of Arnold Lane. This is our property here. It's a pie-shaped lot, and this is the, I think you all have the survey that you can read better, but this is where the garage and carport are, and we currently want to enlarge it slightly and enclose it for safety and security.
So that's right now a carport with two cars. It's actually, it looks like two carports, one stacked next to the other.
Yeah, it's a carport and a shed. I have pictures of it that you can see. Just to give you an idea, I have to get rid of, whoops. So this is our lot here, and then where the car is, garage is going to go is right here, where it is, and across here is a paper road that's not developed. For housekeeping matters, we did email to Aileen, and we can drop it off tomorrow. We only got back three cards, but I sent her all the proof of mailings and the letters. All of our neighbors we've been in touch with, except the one that lives behind us over here, he's away, he's renting his house, his name is Cody Rice, and he's over in Alaska, so, but he's the furthest away from what we're doing, and all our neighbors signed, and I don't know if Aileen got it, but I emailed it to her, they all signed that they were on board with what we're doing. So the proposed project, we didn't close the existing carport and shed to create a two-car garage, needs to be bumped out a bit in the front to allow for my van tailgate, and I have a picture, a plot plan of inside the garage to show you how that is, so I can have safe ingress and egress from the residence, and I have a wheelchair lift in the corner, which I'll show you, and it gets frozen in the wintertime, and the snow falls in, and it's all exposed, and I've had to replace it, so it's difficult to continue in that situation. And it also protects the second car, and the only access to the garage is from the wheelchair lift. This is just a sort of a drawing of what it would look like, so this would be the enclosed garage here, which is matching the rest of the home, and that's just a detail of it. And then here's the interior of the garage. So a lot of this is driven because I have to have this wheelchair lift here. It's the only viable place in the house to put it, and because of that, it pushes everything further, and so from the wall to the, out here, the 17, 17 feet? 17 feet, so I need the extra space for the ramp, and then for me to maneuver around. So I don't know if you have any questions on this particular
Shows your entry path to the house.
And that's how we get into the house. That's just the proposed That's just the proposed siding, in case you cared. And this is the current floor plan, so you can see that the wheelchair lift is over here in the corner, and then I come in through here. We thought about putting, moving this over here, but that doesn't work because it's too tight and I can't open the doors or anything. This is just another drawing of what it would look like, and that's showing what currently is. So this is the current carport and then the little shed, and that's what it would turn into. It's an oning. So the practical difficulties is there's the existing structures to where to put the garage, and we don't have an alternate place to put the wheelchair lift, and there's no protection from the weather. And the ramp is the only kind of vehicle I can drive, and it takes up a lot of space. And the tailgate is, right now, it's not even covered. This is just showing the existing, and here's where the setbacks is currently.
So it pushed the garage back and uncovered your landing. You see that?
Yeah, right here. This is where my landing is.
It would push this shed back to here.
Wait, I don't know what you're talking about.
This, the existing...
Oh, yeah.
Setback.
Yeah, the existing setback.
Push the shed back to here and would uncover her landing area, so she would be completely exposed to the weather.
Okay, that's very understandable.
And then this just is the visual pictures of it. So this is the existing. It's all open, and this is my ramp here. It comes out, and there's the platform. These are just pictures to show you how tight the spaces. And then this shows that when the, the car isn't even covered, when it's pulled up all the way, and so we need the extra space, and that just shows you the stake from the outside. And that's just the path to go in. It's completely open. That was some measurements trying to show you, but I can't read what it is. That shows you, you know, how tight it is in here. And then that's again showing that the carport, I'm sorry, it doesn't cover. It's 24 feet to there. And here's just some more pictures.
That's the extended addition.
This is the front of the house. And then this is the view from the street, and this is the paper road across the way. This is just our house, existing driveway, and this is the neighbor across the street. So the hardship is that it's a pie-shaped lot, and we have an unusually long front yard. So most of our front yard is, land is unusable because of the 40-foot setback. So we only have front and two side yards. So the location, the existing structure prohibited, would prohibit building an essential two-car garage unless we had a variance going to the setback. And the improvement, the effect of granting the variance would improve the overall street appeal, and it's across from mostly an undeveloped road, and there's no reduction of distance between the neighbors, really, and the neighbors are all on board, except for the one I couldn't get in touch with. There's just a view again of the, that's the road. So it would give me safe ingress and ingress of the house and keep me from being locked out in the weather, and it protect the lift and van, and allow adequate space and keep everything dry. So we could, actually, we want to stay here and age in place. We tried alternate places, and it's very difficult to find accessible housing. And we've lived here for 22 years. It doesn't really have a negative effect on the neighborhood, and it will help us stay here and my husband to, and protect my equipment and overcome the hardship and difficulties of our existing lot. So that's our presentation. Thank you. Any questions?
Mary, you said you had support from your neighbors that you had emailed to us?
Yes, it was, it was a survey. I mean, it was a, they all signed a petition agreeing, except for the one, Cody Rice, who's away.
Do you have a copy of that that you could email me now? Because I didn't get that.
Oh, I sent it with the cards and everything. Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I overlooked it. I apologize.
I can resend it. Did you get a copy of the cards and all that? I can resend it right now.
I'm gonna look for it right now.
Yeah, they're all very understanding and in favor of it, and it'll make the neighborhood look better. Here, I'll resend it.
I got it right here. Hold on.
Did you send it?
Yeah, she got it. She found it.
Yes, I have it.
That's Aileen?
No, Aileen is, Aileen's in the middle. She's there.
Yeah.
I have it right now.
Okay.
I'm set. I'm sorry, I just overlooked it.
Aileen, do the, does this information, is it something we should read into the minutes?
It's assigned. It is, I have reviewed the zoning variance application and plan for Mary Keating and Daniel Harton at 39 Arnold and have no objections, and we have a signature from 35 Arnold, 36 Arnold, 40 Arnold, 42 Arnold, 42 Arnold, 44 Arnold, and 44 Arnold.
And that's fairly significant.
And the only person we couldn't get is in Alaska, so he's not...
The gentleman at 41 Arnold, correct?
Yes, Cody Rice. He's the neighbor that's directly behind, he's behind us in a flag lot, so he's the least affected by any of this.
Does any member of the board have questions of the applicant?
I just have a quick comment to note that, as I looked at it, you're running from carport to enclosed garage with a couple feet bump out toward the street to accommodate your van, which is, to me, is not significant and does improve the look of the property. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. I, my personal comment is that I think that the pie-shaped lot certainly presents hardship and design difficulties and would certainly constitute, you know, the approval of a variance on this property.
I have a question that's more general than this case, but pertinent to this case, and that is the matter of, I suppose, rights of any homeowner who is challenged in terms of mobility to improve or alter their property to accommodate that difficulty. Does anything like that exist?
Zoning regulations do allow for ADA accessible ramps within the zoning front setback, whether they be temporary or permanent. Beyond that, it would be a case of each application would have to come before the board and have you all review it for hardship for each particular location, and it...
I believe, excuse me, I believe that there's a, there's a law that they're trying to get passed that would help that be constituted as a reason to get a variance in addition to the regular hardships.
Well, I do know that, especially when it comes to building code, be it commercial or residential, that there is a standing committee in Hartford that reviews all building code applications that provide handicapped accessibility as being an issue. And I have submitted, I don't know, three or four over the years. I have never had an, an application denied. So I would say that the likelihood, if there was an issue, this would be approved by the state in any case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else?
Well, no, it's, it's, it's very hard to find accessible housing, and it's very limited.
Oh, yeah.
So frustrating, so...
Is there any other member of the board that wishes to ask a question of the applicant? Now, hearing none, I will ask if there are any members of the public that wish to speak on this application. And hearing none, I'll ask if there is any member of the public that wishes to speak against this application. Well, hearing none, I will close this, this item, and we will move forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We will now go into board actions on these items. And first item we will take up is Arnold Lane, because we work in reverse order. Any board member wish to make a comment on this or make a motion?
I move...
I will approve the variance as presented.
I second that motion.
Very good. All in favor of approving this item?
Right.
Say aye.
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 So hearing...
Can you include, just for process, can you include the reason for your approval? You know, state what you believe the hardship, and has shown the hardship.
Well, I would, on my part, I would say the, the first part of our action is based on the shape of the lot that would not permit a garage in any other practical location. And the second item for reason for approval would be the definitive need for handicapped accessibility to and from the lift and to and from the house to the van.
Thank you.
So I guess we're all in agreement. Your item is approved. Second item we will discuss, if I can find my agenda, is item 200917-02, Mike and Kimberly Tromba. Anyone have comments on this item?
The board has approved every single case that's been in front of the board as far as raising the home, so I have no issue with this.
I, I don't either, even though they are raising it higher than the FEMA regulation calls for. I will note that they will not be able to put any HVAC equipment under the house. I don't believe there's height to be able to do that. But I will make a motion that we approve this application at 7 Near Water Road.
Based on...
One Oliver Street.
One Oliver. One Oliver.
Yes.
Yeah. And you see the hardship to be...
FEMA regulations. And I have no issue with the fact that they're raising it to higher because I have actually had to raise a house in Old Greenwich twice because of FEMA regulations. The, the first raising of the house took place in, I believe, 1999, when the, when FEMA was first enacted, and they had to do the same thing seven years ago when the regulations were changed. So I think thinking ahead sometimes might be a good thing. So I move that we approve this item for those reasons.
I will second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I'm still looking for two more voices.
You got my aye.
Yeah, I got you.
I have mine as well. Aye.
Okay, we got, we got mics. Okay. Tad, how do you feel?
Aye.
Okay.
I was waving instead of shouting.
Okay. The, the board has voted to approve this unanimously tonight. The final item up for approval is 20091701, Gelsor and Foster, 7 Near Water Road. I, I think the, the architect made it very clear that what was proposed by the zoning office could not be accomplished because of the ceiling height in the adjacent second floor area. I also think that, I'll pat myself on the back, the suggestion that the eve be, even gutter be retained to give some semblance of a dormer on that side of the house.
I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem with it with the design he has here as well. But, yeah, I don't, I don't see any issues with it.
Okay. So you'll make, you'll second my motion?
I will second your motion.
Okay. All those in favor of approving this item as modified?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay. I think we're unanimous in that approval.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good weekend.
Same to you, Ms. Sachi.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, Foster as well.
Did you want to go over the minutes tonight?
Well, I got a point, just as secretary, where we're not in possession or haven't verified that the green cards have been returned. You need to update us with an email telling us that you've accounted for them and for each of these applications, that you have them.
And I was remiss in not asking because I should have, and I have in the past. So that is also my faux pas, and that will not happen again.
Anyway, so, Aileen, Aileen, if you could just make sure that we're given notice as a board that you've got the green cards, because we've had an instance, not so far back in the past, where we thought we had them, but we didn't have them. So we got to make sure that we do.
In terms of the minutes, I did review them and recommended some changes. I don't know if anybody else had any issues.
I did, and I was trying to go over the minutes just before the meeting started and kind of found there was another copy that I hadn't seen that is several pages longer than the original set. Aileen, do you know if the items that I was asking about got included in some fashion?
Which items were those? I'm sorry.
Well, there was two things specifically. One was, as Tad has suggested, we needed to give an applicant a good idea why we didn't give approval and, you know, be more direct about what our objections were. And the other one just had to do with being clear where, that we said that we approved signage outside of what the requirements are Outside of what the requirements are. For the one side of the building. The storage units. But we did not preclude that they had other signage that would be within. What is allowed. And the way it read, it kind of. Read to me as though it was precluding any other signage. I know that we didn't mean that at all.
I had sent those comments that you had made on to. The secretary and I believe they were included in the, in the revised minutes. If you wanted to. Wait on, on voting on these tonight, just to confirm that.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind waiting just because I think those two things were relatively important, even though they don't seem on the face of them to be important, I think.
I, I agree with Andy. Let's take a second look. And take him up at the next meeting.
Terrific.
Okay, would somebody make motion to adjourn?
So moves.
Seconded.
All favor.
Aye. Aye. Okay, thank you, everybody. It's.
Now, now, off the record. Now that we're off the record, it should be known that I will be.